...for that shape, there is wrong. You know what's wrong? Your attorney's plea was wrong. Everybody knows it's wrong.
Thoughts on tonight's meeting?
It was wrong. All I can say, what they did was wrong. If you can't accept that, then...
I'm gonna show you the full Town Hall meeting for Otter Creek with closed captioning if you can't hear, without interruption from the beginning to the end, realizing that a couple of things happened. Number one, Don the Con throws a fit. Number two, we have an individual who is complaining about their dogs being attacked when their dogs aren't being contained on their own property. And number three, the masked man is removed from the meeting because there is a law in Florida, no coverings of faces in county buildings. Except, I can understand where people could be confused because COVID, everywhere you went, you were governmentally mandated to cover your face. This is a toughie. Wait until you see and watch to the very end.
There's Don. Hey, Don? Don just walked in. All of the council members so far here. The only person we're waiting for so far is, uh, Joe. But...
The clock is wrong and needs new batteries before it can... It's not even that slow a clock.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the masked man.
It's actually illegal, I believe. It'd be masked in official buildings, isn't it?
In a county building.
I don't know.
Or a government building.
He's kinda goofy, isn't he?
Well, you can because of...
Can't technically mask yourself.
COVID? Yeah, you can now because of the fear of certain viruses. Viruses that may happen. But he can wear a medical mask. He can wear a medical mask. She's wearing it. I couldn't wear it either.
Alright, I think we're good to leave. Part of this meeting. Alright, let's start with the agenda. We've got the approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
First of all, the minutes. Senator Zinn, eight points, please. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Special guests, the Papa John's, which can't make it tonight. They're gonna be here next month instead. But they have filed our findings with the state and it's all been satisfactory.
Yes, we went in and did our part. And for the first time ever today, we have filed with the state and everything's been accepted. No errors.
Yay!
Let's go back to the roll call. We've got everyone.
Laura Ma.
Carl Dier.
Zinn, Madison, Melinda, and Megan. Okay, and Judge said he had some family issues. One of them, I think, he didn't make it tonight. Okay, thank you. Alright, hold this and talk about the festival regarding the resolution. Do we have anything?
No, we haven't. We haven't written a credit copy.
I would just like for us to at least read it tonight. And see if we can read it and that way we can all read on it or we can just look at just a little bit. There's not a lot of pardoning really isn't. So he's facility in the city, I think you ought to at least list that as a free pardon. The main streets out here, maybe looking park up right here, if you feel a little set far away. For pardons of three, a few things within the city.
Do we still have the gate access from over here on the dirt road?
Yes.
That might be in there.
Right, and that will be straight back in now to the main drive to, hang on. You know, something like that. And so involved about individuals having family over or guests that are parking in the yard. Obviously, if they put aside for a free parking and then they get exempt from a permit that would be required. You're going to charge fees and you gotta get a permit. That's how we should do that.
He's hiding one, he's putting it in my yard.
Yeah. I mean, that's their ones right, for sure.
But we do need to look into walking off like, um... Like, um, Mr. Connie and, or Ms. Connie and Mr. Rainey's property.
Okay.
Because Rainey's out of town, don't know when he'll be back.
That wouldn't be much on his property.
So the couple's face across the country, some flag and ticket?
Take, definitely. And high enough that people maybe won't ride over from.
Right. Okay. You might want to print out some business signs that say, "Pay on paper, just no parking instead of pick-up sticks." Or mistakes or something.
And probably a property next to it.
There are wishes, I mean, it's, uh... I don't want kind of commissioning, we're not gonna fly you like a property dog.
No, for the houses that are empty. Those two across the lane.
Right.
On that road, those two there.
Okay. They got, there is no problem, we can fly off the property, walk in on the property, not the fence. Shouldn't be missed at all. I just don't want tenants to need to remove use of it. Because if you don't want, you have to be able to file with the community. But who does that, assisting or most assistance? We've had, Tri-Myth here has worked its tail off and given us a lot of information, a lot of stuff going on for the festival. He's got us a nice source of venue list to get through. I like Chris, but if we have time, to get a copy of that and look through it and then reach out. And he's been as councilors to see if we can put him around the festival. I believe, you wanna talk about some in?
Yeah, absolutely, whenever. Sounds good. So, yeah, I've actually been able to raise enough money to pay for thirty, so far thirty-two booths and three food vendors, whichever direction the city decides to go. And my idea with me and myself, what I wanna do is to be able to try and raise enough money to where we pay for, my opinion with the street size and everything, no more than fifty vendors. The list I provided you guys has more than seventy, I think, on it. And I have another list that I'll bring as well. Another suggestion, maybe handpick, because there's only gonna be fifty spots, as to what we reach out to first to see who would wanna commit. But, um, but I think that, you know, moving forward to city kinda healing and becoming a little bit more of a community, I think this festival's really gonna do a lot of good and I hope to be able to bring that to you all with just my experience from doing events all over the world. And I think that you're in the right, you're in the right direction, I think. The world really, the planet actually supports you all, really. Obviously, I'm not gonna beat a dead bush, everybody knows this all over YouTube. But the planet is really behind this town and moving forward, I've gotten some volunteers that are interested. Something I wanna suggest to the committee is, um, like, we offer overnight, if they wanna set up the night prior, but we have people in place that would be overnight eyes, you know? Maybe two people doing two shifts, four-hour shifts, to where we'll have somebody watching up another street because the street would be closed off. But that way, we could offer the vendors that, where we take off a little bit of the stress of the beginning event on eight o'clock, before eight o'clock in the morning. Because if everybody comes at that time, it might be a little bit more hectic to get everybody out by eight. But if we allow them to come in ahead of time, let them know, hey, this is gonna be secure overnight, we have people watching, I think that's gonna relieve a lot of the morning stress that will come with an event. And ultimately, like I said, the first-time event, I would love to be able to help the town of Otter Creek, be able to say, hey, listen, you guys don't have to pay nothing, you guys come here, celebrate our city, celebrate this, and make some money. And some other thoughts, ideas I had was, this will be all you guys to discuss, but maybe some of the town people get involved in a sense, like, maybe Ms. Melinda, have a lemonade stand, she sells lemonade. Carl, maybe you do sweet tea, you know, you sell sweet tea. You maybe do shade ice or something. And, you know, whatever, whatever things you do, that everybody kinda collaborate. And then the community residents can actually benefit from this. So not only the vendors are coming for free, they're making money. Now, if a community resident wants to be involved, again, this is all through the city and through legal, then they can, you know, be involved and they can help generate revenue for themselves out of the festival. And that's like a win-win in my eyes, like, hands down.
Thank you.
Please.
I don't know how this works. Do I just like write something or something?
They're gonna bar up here if you wanna fill it out and then, as far as we get to the public conversation, you fill it out, put it in a box, and we'll pull the cards out and you'll have three minutes to see. And we'll have timers. And how long would you have, because I've seen the topic of this, is... Are you gonna just fill the card out?
I, um, I have to check out any anyone's here, whether it's for hats and, you know, a little booth for them or having it on standby. I think the hats booth thing will be more cost efficient for the town. But I have not gotten a pay call back yet. I have heard you out that you need somebody.
The chief of park, park says everything is set up. Once you know these, these type of things, definitely be rattling hands and engines, so the board says we divide out. And we're not saying that absolutely these people can't leave before this time or they can't come in after this time or they have to be escorted by somebody that supplies, who walk these streets, which means getting over the situation of people out of the location. You know, just sort of like drivers or something. And the eight o'clock thing is really, I'm trying to cut off the street track as they want. When most foot traffic's not gonna begin until ten o'clock. So probably nine would probably be better, but that gives vendors a little bit more cushion time on that one. There is a clock on there and the four o'clock thing is, I think there was a single four o'clock thing, just if someone has to leave, you know, they gotta ask for a figure and get out, you know, if someone's on the corner. Someone having emergency, they can't deal with it themselves. And you can make it to nine, you know, and, uh, four o'clock stays. Food truck stays, food truck stays.
I have a question, one question I had in drafting this. There was reference to the fact that the food trucks would pay seventy-five dollars, that's about ten percent of receipts. And that's the part that wasn't clear to me, so I wanted to add.
Yeah, it would be a, it would be a, um, honor to kind of thank them. They say they sold a thousand dollars of stuff, they just pay a hundred dollars, ten percent of the collectives. And we're not gonna give a camp of money and we just want to put our word, what you're saying, on it. And that might change according to, um... It sounds like, um, there might be some league way in this, there's the traffic that raises funds, basically the traffic is paying, paying the fee, basically the traffic is the vendor, so therefore, he kinda just to make his own rules of how he's doing his debt on himself. But, but we have to have it. So that was a question that I was coming online, seeing this, a question about it. If it turned into what you just described, we don't get a food vendors and we stay the councilors, picked up a food with each or of that type, and this is funding to purchase some of the foods that we sell, then of course, you know, that food, that money would be donated to these stuff. And also, now, now we would be having our own booth, doing the food stuff, and it would be our participation and then we would turn in our funds, or at least cover our costs and then turn in our balance to the town.
So it sounds like you wanna add a section about the potential for town councils slash others to operate food on the seventy days, is that kind of what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that way it's, um, because, you know, food vendors, first time they're getting a lot of negative feedback, not negative, but hesitant to riskation. And so if we get, say, if we get a thousand people come through here, they're gonna want something, there's something to check. And, um, we're gonna, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna spend a lot of money on buying foods to pay for it and then if not sell, I mean, now we're out of pocket for ourselves. This is the same, same thing with vendors, you're saying. That's what I was thinking, if you, if you raise the funds, we can kind of assess a value and you can apply that to some food purchases and then we can cover what we need to cover for ourselves. And then at the end of the day, we sort out ours and we go with the rest of the town.
Yeah, totally up to you guys, whatever you guys decide, however, whatever direction you guys wanted to go with it. Just wanna feel, that's why I bring it to you guys to decide and do yours.
I think it'd be good for us, and good to get everybody from town coming through. So I'd like to have that loophole in there so that we don't bother the whole resolution.
Okay.
Okay? Alright. We got industry, just talking about that. The check-in thing still starting at six a.m. I'm sure somebody will be there five o'clock to start. I know I'm late at that time of day. So it would be, using the, the dead range, obviously, probably even though we have market industries and laying out slots and all the people that are here. Oh, one of the things we didn't talk about was the, there's twelve hundred something feet of street. And you buy that up, we originally said ten by twenty spaces would do a hundred lots. But these vendors are coming, they're really gonna replace a park and they're paying a long ways apart to be here and trackability there. We have one spot, they're vehicle right next to the tent and they're all on the same street with the vehicle.
Knocking down the pit.
Knocking down the pit, just the number that we're successful in.
Yeah.
And that makes our goal easier to max out.
It's gotta make it more appealing, honestly, for the vendors. When they come here, you know, if someone might be having a problem with it and say, hey, if you mind parking out of here away from this spot, but someone, this is first-time festival, we want them to come back next year. So therefore, if they had to walk and get their, they forgot something, a display or something, have to go all the way to park in the back, and then if we're busy, we can't direct, I mean, I mean, it's like, they have it all right there, it gets hot out, they crank up the car, get the A.C., and then they're gonna wanna come back next year. They had everything kind of just like, I don't say, just like, hey, on a platter, like, man, you come here for free, you can set up, you can park right by your booth, which most, most festivals, you can't do that. You have to, you have to park and you have to go separate. But for the first-time festival, it's gonna make it more appealing for the vendors and then next year, you know, you scale it as it grows.
Makes it feel this year, we may not have to do it next year, but it would be, it would give everyone a chance to see the capabilities from next year. So it would be, we could get a little bit more stricter on, um, guideline standards of what we need to do to need. I'd like for us to see, uh, one, who's successful and go, uh, anything that makes it, you can do. Right now, we're reaching out to some of the farmers, some of the local businesses and trying to, you know, get track companies to kind of get a booth in front of the tractors and someone sit there and give a bottle of water or something. Whatever they wanna do. Alright, so, uh, we are...
I know we wanna do it on the street, but what if, could we sit more, if we did it back in the park? Maybe something along here in front of here? So, you know, we could incorporate, not everywhere, but the Town Hall and the old, um, we can't really do a lot of it there, but...
You wouldn't get as many vendors in this spot in here at all.
You'd be back off the road, you'd park.
Then you'd be blocking a lot more driveways, that way you'd be literally a lot of people to the right side.
So walk off this street here, or wouldn't really walk the streets if you did, and I think that would definitely buy it down to a half and then there's a base, it's not less than that.
I think...
And this, this is a good occasion, if it works in the next year, which, alright, we're gonna figure out where to do the whole street next year. And then, uh, that way we got, we got some experienced behind us, you know, where we should put these out there amongst you. And next year, we make it start, we wanna let some of the organization run the thing, let this, let it matter. And just enjoy it like no chance to do. But the truth of matter is, this town needs to be, and it's, um... So it's, I'm looking forward to that, it's just a, uh, a good time for your own town, a good experience and a town benefits. So that's, that's awesome.
Honestly, that location is, is great, to be honest with you, because you think about all the traffic that goes down, was it nineteen right there? And if they drive by, and they've been driving for a while, there was such a legend, obviously, the festival's gonna come up to the end there, and they see all the booths and everything set up, like, oh, we're gonna turn it, we'll go back and see what that is, you know what I mean? Because, you know, they can actually see it, you know, driving by.
And that street's also fairly shaded too, you know? So it's nice, that benefits too. Alright, um, anybody look through this, do you have anything you've spoken out or talked out? You have to have a reading of this, I would say next month, so if you wanna do anything else, you want to do this. Alright, I have. I think that covers our technical stuff that we're worried about, by, um, kind of thing, that's really what we need to have. Anybody else got anything? Alright, anybody out there have anything you could on this?
Um, I just have one thing that I maybe look into. And that, gee, you're talking about people having different food, um, checking with the UPR to make sure, since it's less than thirty days that it's gonna be there, you may still need a temporary license to sell food.
That's on my list of the...
So check that to verify.
There is a rule, I think the town, uh, for, you know, Bronson and others, where they have their festivals, they waive all of that just because of the city of them.
Well, I, I do know that if it's, if it's put on by, say, the Lions Club or one of the vets or something like that, then it would fall under them, but if it's the city, it's a, it's just a very, you know, kind of gray area. So I would check into it before anything, just to verify that the people, um, any nonprofit would fall under nonprofit and that kind of thing. So just because, I just don't want anything to happen ahead of time, just check into it, make sure you don't. And it's just a temporary license if you do, so it shouldn't be a issue.
Maybe follow-up, for sure. Check on. Alright. Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay, this training coming August first is from Cross C for all of us and, um...
Everybody's ready.
I'm ready, I'm all ready, well. Those are really beneficial, they get a lot of information, uh, really, really get a lot of information for us. Alright, um, Melinda, you, um, you got security left here. I want you to get to that fourth. Okay, we have, um... We'll talk about the state, we can talk about it here while we're... He's trying to make it something. We're talking right there. Quick, just saying, it didn't take me twenty minutes to find that. Alright, we, um, we got a very small video here, it's just a few minutes long. We're gonna play this tonight, and the reason we're playing this is because this next step we're fixing to take place on them is, um, this is showing you why our justification is and why we make our reasoning the way we did when we were taking this down. And this is what happens if we will produce, and any, um, dispute has fallen against us. Everyone, please be very quiet, note talking and questions during the video. We will not replay it, but we'll be glad to clarify anything, take a couple minutes to clarify at the end.
We, we initially, we don't have a problem with that, so remember we said we should hit a bar. What you're doing here is immoral, so people...
That's true, you know that. Even ignore the charter. And I might have to do that on this, but he is that, what I'm saying.
And leave your phone, because I just saw the screen, you're recording and you're removing a public recording from a public...
Leave your phone, you're a little late, no. Okay? Well, you're control of being, look at this, happens every time, we had that number five months. It's all one crew, so it's, it's criminal, you're doing it. And, uh, I did you...
Are you putting?
There you said it.
Yeah, are you putting that?
Okay, just to be clear about this, and take a minute to talk about this for a moment. At the beginning of this, when Don first spoke about it, Megan explained to him that this was, we had to sign in council members, that we had no court, we didn't even have the members, even have a meeting. So we had to swear in the members to do so. Don refused it and he said he had wanted nothing to do with this, so absolutely. And I took that as if the city's wrong from his hand, we voted on this, and it passed, and it's accepted that. I just wanna make sure and kind of clarify it before we step this seat, okay? Alright, so we got, um...
By failing to install the duly elected person, councilman for that shape, there is wrong. You know what's wrong? Your attorney's plea was wrong, everybody knows it's wrong. So that's what you are and you're wrong and you know it.
Please have a seat. Okay, so you can't, we have a letter of interest of can and anti-nominal, what are you doing right there?
Duly elected councilman.
We only have one interest of can for this seat, duly elected, and that was Brett, um, was the, is the new one of the party party here, uh, the, is that correct? I'll point you out that right. Okay, um, so, um, there's only one candidate, candidate for the seat, so I don't want you to really take a vote, but I'm guessing...
I might imagine.
I think you should...
Have to wait here for six months?
Yes. Okay, so there's two.
Unfortunately, I'm not leaving here in December.
So, all in favor? Aye, 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 three, you know. Brett, if you would, he's gonna have a seat and he will be told in.
We'll not make it right.
You gotta, I did that, I did that, my fault. So we wanna do the swearing in him before we do the next step.
Yes. Okay, so Brett, so you'll, you come here. Okay, give me this, say your name. I'm Brett, so, is someone who's swear, is someone who's swear or affirm that I will uphold and defend, um, the, I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, and, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Florida.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Florida.
And the ordinance of the town of Otter Creek, so help me God.
And the ordinance of the town of Otter Creek, so help me God.
Alright, we've got, um, we are safety deposit box to keep, it's been stuck in a file box in years, you can tell it's been stuck in lots of places, the original ordinance of the town. And it's pretty wet. But, uh, we have, um, seek out towns that sort it for a safety deposit box, and we are, we are required to keep this thing in a safe, in a safe place outside of, of, of this, in the bottom of here. Um, so the safety deposit box was, uh, we selected, was that with C-FIX or Capital C?
Capital C.
Capital C, and, um, you wanna talk about that, please?
It's, the, the, the safety deposit boxes, we, for all of our original ordinances and resolutions. They, the original, have got to be off-site, because those are our laws, our amendments, and our house deals and the legislation we gave us, Otter Creek. The original one is in the following year, that is not supposed to happen. If a fire hurricane comes, we're supposed to have these off-site. So therefore, instead of having a safe, trying to figure out who, where it is, what it's, we've just been, it's been, it's cheaper to pay seventy-five dollars a year to have a ten-by-ten box, it's thirty inches in length, and you can put all kinds of things in there, but it's, it's, it's off-site. A year, that's what I said, I had, are you sure that it says? No, 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 an annual fee of seventy-five dollars.
Um, that's, that's cheaper than a box.
There'll be three people, of, of three of us on the, I went ahead and enlisted, set people that are on our checking account, and that's, that's a different change if you ever want. Uh, I put it since, um, Carl, Jim, and I are on the checking account, because that's what the resolution said, I went ahead and did this for the safety deposit box. If that is okay, we can go on the account, just form around, and have you guys sign at the bottom, and it just states that because we need to have this happen, and off-site. Um, I cited this, this, then, my own, this time, and so if everybody agrees, we'll find the bottom for you, and then we can...
Okay, I've got, um, just got the list of assignments, okay? We can get a motion for this, I'll make my decision.
A second.
Second. All in favor of that?
Alright.
Then, on the third, we have a passion table.
I think it's time for you to dance or be a... That writes nice.
It does. It's hand-made, the guy makes all the moves, he cuts it all around, and he does this stuff that he's, uh, he's developed a lot, and he's just making it for everybody to visit.
That is amazing.
Yeah, I thought it was something else.
You doing?
It's black.
Oh, yes, please.
No blue pen for you.
I'm sure you can probably get the, the meaning of it. Okay, um, so that's established out there, all good, alright, so we have, um, um, we got, did the final stuff talk about, we got administration, Melinda, you got something you wanna talk about?
Um, well, um, as I told everybody, about the yearly audits that already been done, that's submitted first time ever on time, well, before time, too. So that'll be behind us.
So let's all give you a paddle back.
Uh, next item is, by the end of the month, we will go live with our new software program. Um, so if you know, in the next fifteen days, you'll get a letter, that I'll give you instructions on how to go online, set up your account, so that you can, uh, pay your bill, so your history. Um, the, right now, you can go onto the website, um, I'm, I have all the resolutions scanned, all the ordinances scanned, all the minutes, the packet, the agendas, they're ready, we're working on uploading them now. So that'll be finished, we're gonna put some other little, uh, a bulletin board in there, so that we can give you guys, um, information on hurricane prep. And, uh, we actually have a, I think, has its own weather station, that's what the little thing in the party is for. So I wanna give you guys that, the link, that says you have to check the weather, it is for Otter Creek again. So we're, hopefully, if everything, that will live with this by the end of the month as well, so right now, we're moving forward.
You're moving forward, Mr. Melinda, who is the...
A lot of pictures, that the older, I can have some around, um, if anyone can come up with any more, I would love to have some, um, um, some of you guys saw, some of the, the, the bigger ones that I did, um, and, um, we shared the one on the film.
Get some of these pictures of the town, and this original time, and put them up inside here.
This is, well, if you're not, this is Otter Creek in the nineteen forties, so we actually had a downtown Otter Creek, yeah. Um, market house, and, um, depot, and business office, and, so, uh, we wanna get started on, um, putting them up on the walls. We have some other ones that we're working on, though you can't get them too enlarged, because then they get real ratty, and you lose the picture. So if you have anyone, those of anyone that has any older ones, would love to get a hold of us on the copy, uh, I don't want, need the originals. And, um, not only that, but then we're gonna set up a bulletin board for our festival, so, as, as well, but, yeah, we wanna get started on the, on the, but not history yet.
I did wanna add that, uh, Melinda is using her own money to, um, to, to pay for all of these enlargements. This picture alone was thirty-five dollars, I have, um, started a collection envelope in her office, if people would like to add to that envelope, um, so she can make some more of my enlargements, um, they can also send envelopes of money to the town hall.
You don't have to.
No, you don't have to, but you certainly can.
So, um, but, that is where it's my department goes, that's where we stand with, uh, that is...
Is this, he brought us into the...
An inquiry for public information also is what they're already, okay? So that's, I'll make requests, it's direct straight to the department, and they will pull me themselves. Melinda has now the next one, Doc, she works a lot, she has, um, she really, extremely brought, um, a chaotic mess of paperwork and trail of, of, of abuse and neglect of that office, I would say at least ten years, not fifteen, of it. And she brought it back up, and got it back in line, we're, we're all within the rules and regulations, and, uh, we are, uh, just typical, but you, so come help us do this. Um, I'm so glad, when first, when I first asked her, she was like, no, I don't wanna get involved, I don't wanna get involved. And then, uh, then she saw the struggle that we were in, and she stepped forward and came in, and just really, and really just showed us that, how lame that I am, anyway, I believe that.
I think shows how much love she has for this town, this community, this Otter Creek.
Absolutely.
Office of administration is a real skill.
Will be same as Melinda?
Same town, who lives in the same town, who over here lives here?
I work here.
You work there?
Yeah, I work there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, so, Melinda, I just wanna make sure, point that out, that you, you are very much appreciated. Okay, um, Public Safety, Laura, have you got anything on that you wanna talk about?
No, no.
For you guys.
Megan, it's, uh, Richard, you got anything, we've got, is there anything you've dealt with?
No.
Uh, the water is, uh, coming along, our, both our water facility people have been on vacation, I believe they'll come back next week. So that we, after we're about the end of the month, we might be able to have the filter systems online by the end of the month. And, uh, there'll be a pile test run, and I'll have to be turning on, step back off, and have the approval by GDP and the water management people to go back to put it online permanently, and we have the ones in the chest, and that kinda sucks, when you know you're following that, two or three days worth of testing, you're gonna lock. So, I'm really excited, we'll be having this online by the first of March. Yes, sir.
How long's it gonna take to flush out everyone's volume?
There is, uh, there is, uh, I think it's three days of the water just in, in the pipes. No, 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 I'm sorry, in the tank, there's three days of the water in the tank, and there's about a day of the water in the man, in the water main itself. So, if we get it online, and s, don't let it supply for at least two days, that'll bring that reservoir way down. Uh, but the risk factor is, now we just will weigh our comfort zone, if something clicks out, or falters a little bit, so we just lost two-day cushion for the period. So, I, I, I'm thinking, instead of trying to rush the flush out, let's, let it take its time and keep our buffers on. Right now, we have a three days minimum.
We need it like the more rain would.
Yeah.
You know, once it's online, you can always open up a little fire plugs, and let some water out.
Well, that's a monthly thing, because every month, or every few months, um, it's like a fire, and, so, it's like, although it's, once we're online, everything's up and going, fully functioning, we have, uh, we got confidence, and we got it. So, uh, uh, we still have the old system in place, but we can, uh, go right back to, all the switches have been done, maybe switch from the system now to the new system. And then we'll have, uh, we'll have to switch the back, change the valves, and then go right back to the old system, uh, if we, if there was something that stood wrong. And we'll keep, we're gonna keep that cushion for at least six months to the year, uh, before we look at trying to take out any of the old, just to make sure that the...
Keep the secondary in place.
Just something there. But everything we have is in duplicate silver, you know, there is multi-felt faults in the system now, and, um, I didn't think about, I just lost the pictures. We're at August, want your pictures, so next month, we're having, we'll just, I'll bring them, show everybody what the thing looks like inside, what it used to look like, what it looks like now, and, uh, and why it's operated. Want to do that? Okay, anybody got anything on that?
I have a question for Richard, has he mentioned the access from the, for the festival, that there's a path, does that need to be cleared and maintained or anything? Can we have, can I help you out with that, or anything, if any of that needs to be helped up? Cause I know it's probably not in your regular, you know?
The, uh, but on the park right behind us, there's an access gate to the...
An access gate, is, is there a path that needs to be cleared or anything, or is it, or the gates totally just... That's all I wanna know, is it, if there was a need to bring or anything, that would need to be cleaned up to use that access?
Alright, so we got, um, there's that stuff, we got analysis.
So, uh, on the, the children's table, um, I list, had a list of the days that they'll be here in, um, in July and August. It's also on the website, on the calendar. Um, the Walk of Sassa meeting for the, um, wastewater, uh, is scheduled for, um, July, that is canceled, and it's been rescheduled. So, and their next one is August twenty-first, remember, everybody, anybody is welcome to come and sit, um, at this, listen to us, what's going on. Um, so, um, it's usually one o'clock on the schedule day, and you, uh, I also put the new schedule up as well, not only in the agenda, but at the schedule itself. And that would be one of those things that we're gonna place on the bulletin board, so that, you know, but it ends up into the public.
It's the third grandest date of the month, at one o'clock.
Where is it gonna be in August?
Uh...
In August is going to be in Bronson, and it's their address of six sixty east, east Hathaway Avenue.
Um, that, my question is for Laura, has anything been done yet about the, the dogs running around Louis, as far as the festival?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
When it comes to the animals, the only way county will even step in is if it becomes aggressive towards somebody.
Okay.
So what we can do is we can send a letter back to the owners, asking them to put them up.
Okay.
At least for the day.
For the day, okay.
Okay, so...
You're raising my dog for short, either they're outside.
I don't, I don't know who you are.
I'm Heather, Heather Riley, and I live on, on that first street right there, that I've been on for the past few years, that I've been pinning up. I'm pretty sure I'm the only one with the two dogs that do roam the street.
I'm more concerned about the dog, I would say.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
There's, there's probably two dogs, well, that are still...
My dog, my dog's been, we, my dog's been shot, I got a quarter meter, right in the back, and somebody stood over top of him and shot him. So, and that's when he was six months old, um, and they were, actually, my dog just came back complaining in the water in my backyard, and, and I had to pull my dog out from my house, that was, you know, he was shot.
Is he alive?
Yeah, he's alive, he's alive, um, but, um, my dogs weren't like that until, number one, he was shot, and the female was beaten so bad, that her head was so big, and her eyes were so close. So, um, and there are about three, four people that walked by, that my dogs do guard that, but they know the ones that are messed up, and...
Is it recent?
The water, the people, the day, the little kid, the guys, the people going in, you know, the street.
Is it recent?
Um, no, it's, it's been about, it's been a couple months now.
There's some new developments in, in the town?
Yes, there has been some new, ever since, um, the new, the new RV park just went up, I have video of, of the new people that's been coming in, and there have been out, both, all hours of the night, so... I mean, there's other concerns, I mean, I have some concerns, I'm new, I, I've never been one to do it before, but...
And that, talking about your guys.
Well, we met our dogs, because we...
Do you have a participation portion, we can get back to that, okay? Um, um, we, before we go from the meeting to public participation, I would like to talk to the council about having a workshop once a month to bring in our ordinances and our, um, resolutions up to date. We have, um, we have lots of people inquiring about permits and stuff, we're trying to get online with, uh, State Book, uh, for them to come on with us. We have to get our ordinances brought up to date, and get them lined up, so we can have actual set rules to go by. There's been so many, there's been so many precedents preset, that it kinda eliminates some of this, probably half of this stuff, the challenges, and we need to at least bring it up to the date. So we got whatever those things are, and this, so that way the rules are consistent for everyone, the same. And, um, so I'm thinking, first Tuesday of the month would be, uh, the same time, would be, um, that way we have it on the same cycle, well, Tuesday, we can do this Tuesday.
Another one for me.
Okay, at seven o'clock Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month?
I can't promise that I'll be here, um, just because a lot of my services, things are Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So, we won't, we, we won't, um, be passing anything, we just, we ironing out, making sure with all our eyes, get it together, and we'll read it at the Redman.
Give us two weeks to...
Right, to find team, uh, you know, down, so we can actually read the ordinances. Now, we, we've got a lot to do in this behalf, just to get this happening, and there's so many things that's so out of date, and the ordinance that was, uh, you know, I think it's been told me multiple, many times, that the ordinance the town has really wasn't written for this town, they were, they were taking a poll from, uh, towns like Orlando and Tallahassee, that had these things in established, and and they just pulled those cookies together and made this ordinance for our town, uh, so it really wasn't suited... Uh, so it really wasn't suited to our town. So it's been, there's so many changes been modified over the years, precedents has been given to, to make it work what the town needs. And so we just need to bring them up, bring them up to where they show that, so they are consistent and there are something to stand behind. Um, we gotta do it for code enforcement, the building and for, uh, you know, code enforcement in towns. But, but when we start with the building front, that's the most precedent thing we gotta get in line for. You, the inspectors and then, uh, uh, building issue to stay in the highest when we start. So first Tuesday every month, 7:00 PM, and then of course, the, 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 the following.
So starting August?
Just now.
Now, is the, the workshop will be just up or will, will it be allowed?
Oh, sometimes, but then not allowed to participate. This will be us in our conversations, we just get it out. Now, we can, I guess we could put that question to the public. You know, it wouldn't be, it won't be open
Discussion.
Open discussion in terms of what we do, it's gonna be discussions we've changed what we're trying to accomplish. Alright, so that being said, we got that, we're set for that. And, uh, so you have to meet our notice, two weeks notice for, I think, though, I'm sure we'll put it down on board, you know, a week ahead of time. The public notice. Um, participation, we got a few things up here. Yeah, alright. Uh, we have a guest here today, and she is, she submitted a request to the public question. She is a guest for hours, she's come to our town, and she has helped us out many times in our meetings. Uh, we felt, felt, didn't have a clerk or didn't have situations and hands, she certainly has been a help to the town. Megan, Megan Waters, would you like to speak to us?
Sure, please. So yes, my name is Megan Waters. I'm here tonight as a candidate for the Levy County Clerk of Court. Um, I first wanna say that the last meeting I was not here was like nine today compared to today. And I wanna commend all of you for getting this together and for what you're doing, all the old photos. And I, I just wanted to commend you for that. Y'all come a long way. I'd love to select when I was at, heard somebody again, but, um, good to know. So I prepared a speech for y'all to peek, if I want a timer, I wanna skim through this and stay on track instead of venturing off down the road. So again, my name is Megan Waters. I'm a candidate for Levy County Clerk of Circuit Court and Compteur. Um, I have worked at the courthouse for over 12 years. Eight of those years I worked in the clerk of court box, and then I went on to work for the county judge, and that's where I'm at now. Little bit about me, I graduated Brockton High School 18 years ago. Um, I love to hunt and fish and enjoy the outdoors. Um, no one will look like that now, but I do. When I get home, I have my crops on. Um, I am not only aware of the league culture of Levy County, I'm a huge part of it. I'm very big in my community, I go to all the events, um, love supporting things, I love to see success. And, um, just so many organizations out there that need donations and help, just a helping hand and encouragement. Um, my husband is Megan Waters. He works for Central Electric in Chequon. He's alignment. He's been there for 16 years. Uh, we live in Chequon, that's where our home sits. Um, him and I have been together for about 15 years now. We've been members of our church for about 10 years, and I love it there. I've held many, many, many leadership roles there. I tend to start one thing and end up with many, many hats, and that's okay. Um, I love it. So I plan on dedicating the rest of my career to the Levy County Courthouse and the citizens of Levy County. I have a service heart, I always have, and it's tripled on up to politics, politics, I guess. So a lot of people won't know what the clerk of court does, so they are the clerk to the district court, the clerk to the county court, and the clerk to the four of county commissioners. Uh, a little bit about my career, my career started over 20 years ago in banking. And I hold over 23 cor, um, course certificate completions from my banking career that I'm very proud of. I did not realize how many I had until I started studying and preparing for this campaign, and, and I was very proud of myself for that. Um, I also hold many judicial certificates from, uh, attending clerk conferences and judicial conferences at the courthouse. Um, I've worked for the Levy County Journal and try county advertiser at the time. I was there advertising a county executive. That was a very big title for a 19-year-old, but I loved it. Um, it did me a lot of experience. After that, just before working at the courthouse, I worked at Ganzo Healthcare Centers, the largest, at the time, it was the largest nursing home we had in Ganzo, and I was the admissions coordinator there, which was a department head. There were 12 department heads over, we've all managed over 100 employees. So that's, I have a lot of management there. I was the acting business office manager, I did human resource work, again, I had many hats, um, there as well. Um, I also was the acting activities director. Um, and then after that, I went on to work for the clerk of courts office. There I held many, many titles again. Um, going into the clerk's office, my, um, my dedication and ability and work ethic was quickly noticed. Um, so the mister shift had asked me if I was interested in running one day, and I said, yes, actually I am. Um, my, my heart's in it, I'm passionate about it, and I absolutely love that job. I love every bit of it. So I started moving around the office to learn everything because I thought that it was important to know what the frontline workers are doing before I take the job over. So there I was felony clerk, county ordinance clerk, taxi clerk, bio justice clerk. And then I also learned recording, public records clerk, civil clerk. Um, I worked in the finance office at times, and I also learned the archive records, retention records, the evidence locker, which is quite interesting. Um, a lot of people don't know that the clerk of court holds the evidence that
Needs to be addressed.
Um, puts in, the, the judge puts in the evidence, the clerk has to hold that for several years depending on what type of cases. Um, I also created several manuals at the clerk's office, so the different positions that I held for the next person that puts that job over. So, um, after that, I was offered a job by our county judge. It was Judge Brown at the time. He, his judicial assistant retired, so I prayed about it, I thought about it, I talked to mister shift about it, and we decided that collectively it was probably the best decision I, I could make. Um, and then in my current role, I manage 10 different court divisions. Um, I read and interpret court instructions all day, every day. Um, I am a professional liaison, uh, between all elected official offices, their, their employees, attorney offices, probation, you name it, I, I, I communicate with a lot of people in this county. So we've got the court hearings, monitor court, draft and file orders, which is a legal document. Um, so I've gained many, many resources throughout my 12 years, and it is imperative to have a good working relationship with all the elected official offices and have resources to provide to the citizens. Um, I'm a big advocate of that. I want people to leave my office feeling guilt, not discouraged. Um, and I want to provide resources to them. I don't wanna say, I'm sorry, I can't give you legal advice, or I'm sorry, I can't help you. I want to guide them if I can. However, you cannot give anybody legal advice or fill out a document for them. Um, so in closing, I would like to leave you with this. For the past 12 years, I have served the citizens and officials of Levy County with diligence, honesty, and compassion. I've worked the front lines and greeted everyone that's come over with a smile, and anxious to help them, and still do. I've dreamed of holding this position for a very, very long time. I'm very passionate about it, if you can't tell. I've sat many days in the courtroom. I understand the, what the judges need, um, to process your case if you ever have, should you ever have one. Um, I've been watching the learning throughout the years, all the dues and adults. I've learned a lot, um, I'm very observant. To me, this is not just a professional role to achieve. This is something that I wanted to do for a long time. Um, it's, it's not about the job title either. I truly want the job. I want to go in and do the work. And if my employees are out, I wanna be able to sit down and do what they can do. Um, I've always kept the public in form, and I love to educate everybody. I think that's very important, to be transparent. I will use my attention to detail, organizational skill, vision, and experience to empower the Levy County Clerk of Courts Office if elected. Um, I'm young enough to give decades of dedication to Levy County, but mature enough to admit to the duties of the job. I'm excited to enter this next chapter, and I, um, I hope to be, I will be honored to be your next clerk in this county. I'm very passionate. Again, I have a desire to serve you, the citizens. I'm here for you. This is an interview. You have to make the decision on who you think is the most experienced and qualified. I'm the only candidate in this race that has any hands-on experience at that courthouse, period. Um, clerk's office, anywhere in the courthouse. Nothing against my folks. I think they're great people, but they have no experience. All the other elected officials, most, yeah, all of the other elected officials have had experience in their, in that office before they took it over. There's a reason for that. Um, I'll close by saying I humbly ask for your vote on August 20th. And if you have any questions, please give me a call anytime, or I'll sit around and, um, answer any questions that you have. Thank you for listening. Good past minutes.
We, our voting recently now is that you're at the church, the Baptist church, August 20th. And, uh, it'll also be there in the, there'll be two rounds.
Little educational purpose, I'm a big advocate for education. So, um, if you are not a Republican, I will not be on your ballot. You have until July 22nd to change your party to a Republican, to a Republican if you want a vote in this race. If you, um, if you're an independent or a Democrat, I will not be on your ballot. Should, should I win in August, you will see me on the ballot in November because there's an independent in the race, and that will push us to November. And that's why there's only Republicans in August. Only Republicans can vote in August for my race only. And you can change it on, um, uh, Tammy Jones' supervisor of elections website if you want to change it.
Votelevy.com.
Votelevy.gov.
Yes.
Votelevy.gov, you can change it there. Again, the deadline is quickly approaching. So that's, that is your decision if you want a voice in the race.
Thank you.
Any questions?
For me, though.
Good luck.
I'll, I'll sit around.
Alright, so the, uh, regular public comment, the way this works, we're gonna have a timer set up here, three minutes. Someone's trying to speak, try and direct to us, not amongst each other, if you will. The first one, uh, it looks like it says tie. I'm sorry if I'm saying that incorrectly.
I just have one I have written there just because Travis had listed to me. I'm tied a dominatio of my own free will donating my time and efforts to the Town of Lotte Creek before, during, and after the October festival as needed. I do so with no expectation of compensation or favor of any kind. I further release the Town of Lotte Creek from any unreasonable liability or responsibility for injury or damage to my person or property. I guess I can give that to you.
Sure.
For, for cleanup and stuff like that, it's done. In, in case there is a document that gets drafted out, that's interim, then I'm happy to sign anyone that you
This is going to be a volunteer base.
Anything else, sir?
Good.
Next one is going to be Heather.
Uh, I'm Heather. I just wanna know what was the bet for, where, where the, where is the money gonna go to? Like, is it going towards the town? Is it, what, what's it, you know, and what is it going for? Because, um, the people that live here, you know, I mean, I, I haven't been coming to the town meetings, I didn't know about any business until today. Um, I would like to know where the money's gonna be going to, or what, what we're, what we are trying to take in the town. What are we trying to fix? What are we trying to make better? Um, that's it, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
I have a little bit of information, I hope we're done. We have had, uh, our insurance has gone up almost $14,000 over the last year. And, um, so our budget has increased about 20 grand this year versus last year, this coming year. And, um, we are trying to find sources for the town to have income outside of just taxes. It looks like the reason was taxes, $20,000, uh, just to cover the costs of the town, basic metal. If you look around the town, here is basic metal. The town has none of the
Yes, everybody that lives here is pretty much on fixed income.
Yes.
I mean, there might be maybe 10, 15 people who are, are younger ages that are not on the fixed income. Everybody that's lived here has lived here for so many years, they're inherently seen, they've been here for a living, so.
So the, um, the, all the funds, all the rest, all the rest, that's why the town is actually gonna coordinate this one. I mentioned that earlier. The town's doing coordination, doing all the footwork. Uh, when other towns turn it over to different clubs or members of the town, and they make the money off of it. But the town needs this income, so the town is doing it for our, our stuff to benefit the budget. And like we said earlier, we gotta, we gotta cover all our tax factors. But we're hoping that the town walks away with us with a pretty chunk of change out of this to help us get on well. And also, and also the, um, uh, public involvement, things this town, the people in this town do to get together other than coming here and, um, having to be exposed to busting, arguing, kicking off.
So, well, I, I understand that, but so like where's, like what is the money for? Who is it for here in this town? Like, what is it for taxes? So as people that live there, we don't pay those taxes for our town that we live in?
That's not, I answered the question. I'll answer it again, okay?
So I didn't
Okay, I'll answer it again. The, the funds is to cover our budget, our upcoming budget, where this money's going to. It is going to be right in the general fund, and it'll have, uh, our, our taxes, our, our budget has increased right at $20,000 over the last year's budget. And we're trying to recruit this money somewhere else other than just taxes. The taxes, you'll have to pay the taxes. You'll always have to pay the taxes. And taxes always go up, you can't change that.
And taxes actually go to the county.
Right.
You know, the town only gets maybe 2% or 3% of what Okay, is any, are these taxes going up because of our, because of the new, because of the RV parks or what? That's, I mean, what are, is that why the taxes are going up? Cause yearly they go like
Your gas costs more, your light bill costs more.
Yeah.
Everything the town does costs more than it used to cost. Just like your household, you run it. Every year it costs you more to run it. This year it's been less. That's the same for the town. And, um, we, we're, we are required to have certain things by the ordinance that we have that's not been, been met. And because the town doesn't have the funds to do it. So we have to, that's another reason we're trying to bring the ordinances up to date, what the town really is and what the town really needs. So if this, so the town is in compliance with all the savings and regulations, other than just on paper, yeah, we're gonna do this. But here, we don't have the money to do this. We can't do this. So we've gotta bring these two together so that we can have something. And this is a public community involvement project, and I'm hoping that we do more of these. Uh, we got the community center coming up. I hope we start doing a monthly event, a community center for the town. And this is stuff that, you know, we need, uh, you know, get involved with people in the town. And that's what the purpose of this is, community involvement and helping with the budget.
So what else can we get? Just there and there?
Street vendors, just like one, this, you go on
What is it for kids is it?
It'll be, well, it'll be There'll be some things Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some kids activities, stuff to do for kids.
Just that anymore, if I'm bringing my kids to, I hope they have fun too.
Well, this is the family
Yeah, that's just the more, and, and what you guys have, the more we, we're all good at this. So, you know, here you, if I'm introducing that, I'll make a note and we'll start investigating what, what can we do for the kids?
One, one of the things I would like for the town to do, City of Arlington has, just the last couple years, has put in a little splash pattern over there. It's very, it was very inexpensive, it was low profile, it was, I mean, it costs money. But, um, it wasn't letting them laugh, but it's just really neat, things for the kids to do. Uh, you, you know, if somebody put it in the park like behind us, and if we can raise the money somehow and pay this thing, there's something to take a kiss to. I, I guarantee you, as far as the kids, them kids are going to be there every day right now.
Like, you, you gave me a blue mask, that's not me.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm not being mad, I'm one of you all.
Okay, but this is, this is what, I, I, these are goals we're trying to reach here, huh?
That's what the money's going for, it's trying to
That's what I asked.
Keep the funds up so that other things can be done other than
money's going towards, trying to keep the funds up so that other things can be done, other than just the money.
They're gonna take a while to bring our creek back, because I don't know, my mom was here all the time. I'm from Chequon, but I've been in this area all my life. The strong side on this is up here. I know what was here. This used to be called the Cooter Slide. That's history. That is this history. It should be called, covered back in the Cooter Slide, I think, because, you know, that's what it was.
All right, three minutes of that.
That's politically incorrect. That would be politically incorrect, unfortunately. I know.
Public comments, the, the, um, um, does anyone, before we adjourn the meeting, does anyone in the council have anything to say, or want to say anything else?
The only thing I'd like to say is, people live around here, your neighbors and all, like, they don't come to it, and they don't, you know. Tell your neighbors they're, they're coming, participating, you know. The best way we can do for our town, find out what the people want, what the people need, is for them to come and talk to us.
Right. We need, we need the people to stand and talk to us, not just three or four that just want what they want, and not what the rest of the people want. When I do, when I go around and talk to the people, I get a lot of input, and I hear a lot of things. And it's not the things that can represented at this table, the facts, and, um.
I'm your neighbor, and I have spoken with you, and my dog came from your house. That was shot.
Your dog's.
That's kind of, I mean, it.
Your dog's in my house every day, and it still are.
And, yeah, playing in, in the field, it was, you know, you weren't hurting anybody, not to be shocked. I mean, yeah, normally you can never say, hey, it's gonna rain.
Okay, Rex, welcome.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mrs. Jenner? Thank you, Matt. Jane Jenner.
I'm not worried about it. I've already done, I got, I got. I'm talking, I got friends in the place. I already got friends.
I, 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 I mean.
I, 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 I mean.
John, thoughts on tonight's meeting?
It was wrong. All I can say, what they did was wrong. If you can't accept that, and I'm not asking for support. I just know it was wrong, and everybody else should know it's wrong. If they don't, that's on them.
Well, what part exactly was wrong? The part that you and Russell walked out, or the part that?
It's not a matter of walking out, it's a matter of seating the duly elected official. And that was, that what did not happen.
That the, the last meeting didn't have a quorum?
Yeah, it's not, better luck next time.
The meeting that you walked out on didn't have a quorum?
For what? What, I mean.
So how do you start a meeting?
You can still, can have a meeting.
I don't think so.
Absolutely.
I don't think so.
You just can't, you can't vote on anything. You could have a meeting, you know that.
I've had a, you know, thank, uh, um, thank you.
Why didn't Russell come?
I have no idea.
Um, I saw him driving around earlier today, creeping around, doing ten miles per hour, but I'm shocked he's not here. All right, sir, well, you have a good day, or you have a good evening.